Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Cantor?
Yep.
Motion, Karen.
Thank you. Now, we have public comments for items that's on the agenda. Is there anyone that is, are we connected to?
Right, zoom, yeah.
Do we have anyone that's in the audience that would like to? Anyone that's here that would like to say anything? We'll double check for zoom.
Yeah, she's gonna let a couple of people in, I guess.
Hello, everyone that is joining by zoom. We are, it already started, but we're at the point that if you have any comments that you would like to make for any items that's on the agenda, to please raise your hand. I do have a comment. I believe this is going to be for the agenda for today. I think this is appropriate to say now. So, this is from Bruce Copas. It was actually sent June thirteenth. "Council, you have been presented with a budget showing a large deficit by the administration. The expenses of the administration budget, which has grown sharply for the past five years, needs to be reviewed. To evaluate the increases in staff costs and get a grip on this part of the budget is impossible without a breakdown of the staff and their individual costs, which is salary and benefits. This administration staff breakdown was routinely provided to council for their review, understanding, and approval. Council needs, council needs to make an informed decision on the administration staff costs before approving this part of the budget." Thank you, Bruce Copas.
And that is set on Friday. Tell them a couple of numbers.
Yes, I know. You didn't have to. That's fine. Thank you. It looks like, was there any other comments anyone received? So, next we have the action requests for consideration as a new city administrator's salary discussion.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Who would like to?
Scott is gonna.
Introduce it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, it could be a little louder.
Barely.
How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So, I did have enough time to discuss with, have a conversation with Susan about her contract with the city. Her, so, and the reason why we're back here is because her salary demands are $115,000. So, the council had authorized up to 105. So, I'm back. There's some other areas that she's willing to make some concessions on, including the, probably the biggest one is the healthcare benefits. She has benefits available through her husband, so she wouldn't be utilizing the city's healthcare cost. And I think Pam had identified that's approximately $30,000 in savings to the city. She's also willing to forego the car allowance, as long as there's a vehicle, a city-owned vehicle that she could use if necessary, which I told her we did. We did have the code enforcement vehicle that she would be able to use. She would like four weeks of vacation. And as far as the severance goes, she, just like we had been burned previously with the former administrator, she too has been in a situation where she had waived the severance during a period and then was let go. So, she was a little, a little reluctant, but I think there's some, we could probably come to some sort of understanding where it's a program to pack, is that after so many months, she would then get the full severance package.
Okay. Anything else?
No, not, not listed any specific questions.
Well, she also wanted the, oh.
Oh, the murders benefit to be vested or 401K?
And the 401K.
I have a question. I'm, I'm wondering why we didn't do this before this position was posted? We still haven't gone through the contract, which Scott, you were gonna send to us after the last meeting.
But everything did get sent over.
Well, we wouldn't have a contract yet until we negotiate the salary.
He was supposed to send Cheryl's contract. He was supposed to sign Cheryl's contract so that we could go through that.
Oh, I don't recall that.
Well, we did talk about it last time, and I indicated that if there were specific things that council members wanted either included or not included, or negotiated or not negotiated, then I asked that those be sent to me, and I didn't receive anything from anybody, so.
I know, but you were supposed to send the contract. Luckily, I found it in my files today, but, but, yeah, but you didn't send it, so.
Is there anything in there that we should discuss?
I have a lot of things, yeah.
Such as?
I was just wondering, and the insurance, does the city have a copay?
We pay 20% of our insurance.
20%?
But she is waiving the insurance, and that would be insurance vision and dental that she would waive. But she would get a $3,000 once a year for waiving it.
Okay. Other employees pay 20%?
We all pay 20%, yes.
Okay. Okay, I was glad to see it's not 30 days of vacation. "The employee shall have access to a bank of up to 180 sick days to be used in the case of serious medical conditions." Who keeps track of that? Is that the, what Plant and Moran referred to in the last audit, that it was done manually and should be done, turned over to ADP?
Well, that's a little different than what we have. We get a sick day per month. She was asking for 180. That's a whole different thing with her contract, that in case she got sick, she wanted an additional above and beyond what we already give. Like, it's called kind of like a catastrophic leave.
Yeah, like a sick, and we used to go to the school board with sick thing. Okay, so that isn't, that isn't typical in the contract.
That would be something that would be what? Would be a negotiation in the contract.
Okay. And then, now, she said MERS. Now, this one looked like there were two different systems, MERS and ICMA?
MERS is our, MERS is our health savings account for retirees.
Okay.
And the ICMA, which is mission, something now is, for, that's the 451K, or 451K, which is the vesting for your retirement.
Okay, so she would be getting both of these, too?
Yes.
Okay. And then, it's, "Player agrees to pay an amount equal to 4% of employee's base salary," and then, "Employer agrees to pay up to an additional 3% of employee's base salary as a match for a total contribution not to exceed 7%?"
That was something in Cheryl's contract that was, it was 4% for every other manager.
Okay, can we put that back to 4%?
That would have to be, we can do it. It's a negotiation.
That's something that we all would negotiate, and that's something that she would have to negotiate right now.
She had to request a 10% match.
Oh, yeah, that's not gonna happen.
Okay, then also, these general business expenses. I remember seeing this before about, "Employer agrees to budget for and to pay for professional dues and subscriptions of the employee necessary for continuation, full participation in national, regional, state, and local associations," and then, "Employer agrees to budget for and to pay for travel and subsistence expenses of employee for professional and official travel meetings." "Employer also agrees to budget for and to pay for travel and subsistence expenses of employee for short courses, institutes, and seminars. Employer recognizes that certain expenses of a non-personal but job-related nature are incurred by employee and agrees to reimburse or to pay said general expenses. The employer acknowledges the value of having employee participate and be directly involved in local civic clubs or organizations. Accordingly, employer shall pay for the reasonable membership fees and or dues to enable the employee to become an active member in local civic clubs or organizations." Is there a way to set some kind of a limit on these things, or is there a budget in place? It would be great to have.
We have a membership, we have a training budget, and we have a membership in, that's in our budget.
Okay, but there isn't any limit set in here on, you know, in this contract. It kind of reads like whatever they want to do, whatever they want to be involved in. And who determines whether it's something that's a value to the community?
That would be the council. I mean, all minor value to the, minor GFOA, MMTA, minor, all to do with my job related. And that's what most of ours are. We all do what's our job related for, training, memberships, things like that. So, and I would think that that-
And that, I can add that that provision's been consistent since Jeff Mueller's contract.
Okay. It just seems like there's too much leeway in there for, for someone that may, I don't know, take advantage of it. I don't know. I just, that's, that's a lot of, that's a big perk there with some of those things, and I just, you know, think there should be some kind of parameters around it.
What parameter, so we can write it down?
Well, I don't, up to a certain amount, or up to, you know, again, I think we need somebody that's gonna be focused on the city and, and what's going on around here. Yeah, there's value in going out, you know, to seminars and all that kind of stuff, but there's also value in being home, so.
At this point, all of them are virtual now, so, but, I mean, so, in there, did it say that, did it say that she was paying for her?
No, no, and this isn't, I've read this contract previously and thought, wow, this is pretty free rein. So, I'm not sure if that's something that can be looked at. I mean, we're, we're in a deficit, so, you know, there's some areas we need to really take a look at.
I think that would probably be more appropriately addressed through the budget in terms of limiting the, the amount of available funds for those types of uses versus limiting or putting a cap on professional development and organizations in the contract.
But that's kind of a general budget for everybody, isn't it?
Yes.
So, if there's not specific for this one position. So, this one position could use everything up in the budget. Again, I'm not saying she's gonna do this. I'm not saying anyone has done it, but the potential is there to abuse it, so, maybe that's something we need to look at. All the way around, I don't know. When we were in the school board, we had like a $6,000 budget for everybody, so. The severance piece. You said it would go back to, is this the six months, nine months? I remember Cheryl had this change to last June, I believe, to increase about after an election and all that kind of stuff. What does that look like? What does this look like for her, the severance piece? I know you said she was, you know, she was burned, we know that, but what is she looking for in that section, Section 10 Severance?
I think what I, what I indicated was that, based on our conversation, I would, I had suggested that perhaps we do a 60 or 90-day severance for the first 90 days, and then after 90 days in the performance evaluation review, that, that severance would bump back up to 180 days. The six months is pretty standard in, for the, that's, again, that's what, back, 180 days is what Matt had in his last contract with the city.
Okay. So, that, so when you talked about it going back, or, you know, full severance package, you're talking six months?
Correct. Yeah, the nine months and then a year, if, if within 30 days was a negotiated with Cheryl, based on, at her last, at her last performance evaluation.
Okay. There's talk about the performance evaluation. Do we have an objective evaluation process in place?
I mean, I could let Pam or the mayor speak for it, but we do have a process, but the administrator is evaluated by.
Evaluating by Susan?
There's, when the administrator is evaluated.
It's evaluated by council.
By council. Each council member gets, gets what the administrator writes up. Each council member gets it, and then they put their input in, and then the input goes to the mayor. The mayor combines it all and brings it to council.
So, we don't have any kind of a set, set goals and whatever that they're supposed to?
They bring their goals to you. The administrator will bring the goals to you, what they plan on doing within the next year, or, and then they give you, they tell you what they plan on. That's what you're gonna evaluate on when you do their evaluation.
Okay.
Am I right?
It just says, "Subject to a process, form, criteria, and format," so I just wondered if there was something written that is used regularly, or it's just-
There is a form that's reused regularly for that.
Okay, could you, could you send that? And then, hours of work. "It is recognized that the employee must devote a great deal of time outside the normal office hours on business for the employer, and to that end, employee shall be allowed to establish an appropriate work schedule." Has that, hasn't there been, has there been any structure put in place for that in the past?
No, that's, again, that's the same language from Jeff Mueller contract that's carried forward with all the administrators.
Okay, I'd like to take a look at that, too. Again, there's, there's room for abuse in here. And then, outside activities. "The employment provided, the employment provided for by this agreement shall be the employee's sole employment. Recognizing that certain outside consulting or teaching opportunities provide indirect benefits to the employer and the community, the employee may elect to accept limited teaching, consulting, or other business opportunities, with the understanding that such arrangements shall not constitute interference with or a conflict of interest with his or her responsibilities under this agreement." Is that something that we could add, that there needs to be approval by council?
Yeah, we could, I think if council was fine, then we could include that.
Again, that's, it's very vague and broad and kind of open-ended.
I'm sorry, I'm confused. So, can you just clarify that for me? I think that whatever you said went off in my head.
The city minister has-
That provision she just read, Jalen, allows for the administrator to take a part-time teaching position. And the thought process behind that is that, you know, it exposes them, not only the city, to students and other individuals, and brings, brings and highlights the city, but also provides an opportunity for interns and networking. And so, that's why that, and again, that's a consistent provision that's consistently been in our, our administrator's contracts. What Karen's asking is to put a, subject to council approval, if I understand that correctly. And like I said, I don't think that's a problem.
Yeah, 'cause it also says consulting or other business opportunities, so, 'cause that, I think that's pretty vague and broad and.
Thank you.
That's it.
What were, what were your thoughts on the hours of work? You said you wanted to go back to that?
I don't, I just think there should be some kind of, again, parameters set around that.
Such as what? What's an example?
Such as what?
What's, what's an example of a parameter you think would be appropriate in that, in that situation?
Like a minimum of 40 hours per week, or perhaps certain hours, or?
But it's a, it's a salary position, so it really doesn't matter how long, like, they probably, it's, I think it's allowing for you to work longer is telling someone that you, you would probably be here more than 40 hours.
Right, and it's a professional position, and, you know, reports to us, and if she's not getting the work done, if she's working 60 hours, or she's working 20 hours, she's not getting the work done, and, and, you know, we will, we would handle that. I just don't think it needs to be, I don't think the city manager's a position that should be micromanaged.
It's not micromanaging. I know people that make $100,000, $200,000 a year that have parameters for what's expected, not just, you know, come and go when you want. Again, there, this is, you know, if you have people who don't take advantage of it, that's great, but if you happen to have somebody that comes in that does, it's not, it's not set.
So, can you give us an example of what you would like the parameters to be, or a suggestion?
40 hours. What you want, 40 hours? Are you saying the person needs to work a minimum of 40 hours a week?
Yeah, if I, when I was looking at the other, the MML, the salaries on MML, and looking at all, you know, all these other positions in other communities, they have a, you know, minimum of 40 hours per week.
I have no problem with that. Whoever we hire is gonna be working way more than 40 hours a week.
That's fine.
But does, I mean, well, does that mean you're telling someone to clock in, or are you saying?
I'm not saying to clock in.
Well, I mean, well, how would you manage their 40 hours? Because I work a salary job, and no one asks me to clock in, but you can't confirm that I worked 40 hours that week. That's, that's all I'm asking. I'm just asking a question, because we couldn't really-
It's a valid, how would we track it to ensure it's compliant?
Because she's not gonna clock in, and she makes $115,000. I can tell you that.
I, I didn't ask for anyone to clock in. Just wanna make sure there's some accountability.
So, that's, again, what everyone's asking is how do we hold this person in this position accountable? What is your suggestion of holding them accountable, accountable to know that they have worked the 40 hours?
Well, I'm not, not sure. It would've been nice to have a conversation about all of this prior to-
Well, that's what we're doing right now.
Or, no, Kelly, don't stop saying that's what we're doing right now.
That's what we're doing right now.
These are things that should be done ahead of time, not just at the, we're always being reactive rather than proactive.
So, when would you like to have these conversations? Because this is the time that we're talking about it. That's why we're having a special meeting.
We already have offered a position to someone. We could've set some parameters prior to even posting.
We offered a position to her, and it's contingent. And that's why we're sitting here now to go through it, so we can figure out the contract and what does need to go in it. So, right now would be the good time, unless there's another time that you would like to talk about it. So, if there is another time, could you please let us know when you would like to talk about it? Because right now would be a great time. You have all of us right here.
Prior to posting would've been a great time to talk about it.
Well, you should've brought that up prior to.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you should've. So, one thing that we can add into the contract is that a minimum of 40 hours needs to be worked as a salary position, just so there's no ambiguity or assumption. But I think most people would know, if you're a salary person, that you would have to work 40 hours, so. But Scott, if we could put that in there to add minimum 40 hours worked?
That's not a problem.
Thank you.
Scott, I have a question about the healthcare. So, you know, we're looking at potentially probably close to $32,000 in savings by the time you take off the, the healthcare, which she's not gonna enroll in the, in the car allowance, and then add back the $3,000 that we would give her for the healthcare that she doesn't take. I guess my, my one question is, you know, let, let's say, two years down the road, she, she decides that, you know, she gets a divorce, she wants healthcare. So, you know, how, how does, how does that work with, I mean, I assume that this is just a one-time, one-time thing, and if she wants healthcare next year, then we, we kind of have to give it to her, right?
You would have to go through a new contract with her, is what you have to do, right, Scott?
Yeah, that's, that's what I would've suggested.
So, it'd be a renegotiation of the contract.
Yep.
And at that time, could you reduce salary to, could you reduce this?
To compensate?
Yes.
No.
Because if we're gonna give her a higher salary, knowing that she's-
Can, excuse me, can you, Scott, can you answer that, or Pam, can you answer that? Because that's what I'm thinking, that if we're agreeing to a contract where we'll give you a higher salary without the medical, that's the reason why we're giving you the higher salary. But if it goes into where you asked for the medical after the fact, then I think, well, it's a renegotiation of the contract, but to me, it seems like it would be a renegotiation of the salary?
Of everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think if you open it up, if you're going, I mean, you're gonna look at it from a total benefits package, salary plus healthcare. And so, if right now, at the salary of $115,000, plus, you know, the benefits that are included, let's say your total contract benefit package is a value of $150,000, if we're gonna renegotiate that by adding 30,000, you know, perhaps that means less sick days, or a smaller match on behalf of the city into the 401K, or a reduced salary, so that that, you know, that value of that contract, if it was 150, perhaps after a year, you know, maybe you do a 2% increase or something, you know, whatever it may be, just kind of adjust the numbers accordingly.
What about under Section 9 Termination C, 9C? "If the employer reduces the base salary compensation or any other financial benefit of the employee, unless it is applied in no greater percentage than the average reduction of all department had such action, shall constitute a breach of this agreement and will be regarded as a termination."
Oh, unless, unless it was a negotiated, I mean, if you just unilaterally reduce her salary without her input or consent, then yeah, that would be considered a termination. But if she agrees to the modification of the contract, then it's not a unilateral change.
Well, can we put that in there?
Yeah, that's what, I was just about to ask.
Put what in there that we can renegotiate?
Yeah.
You have a request for change on any of the parameters, instigates a renegotiation of the contract, the total contract? Is that something we can put in there, Scott?
Yeah, I mean, again, I think it's, that's just basic.
Natural.
I mean, the way that 9C reads is if the employer, so that would, because it doesn't say if the employer and employee agree to reduce salary, which is what a contract renegotiation would be, but if, if the city unilaterally, without her consent, reduces her salary, then that would constitute termination. But that, that provision wouldn't even come into effect if she agreed on the reduction or the renegotiation.
But is that something she should be aware of, that if, if she decides she wants healthcare, that we would wanna take another look at it? Is that something that should be in there, or so she's aware, or no?
I mean, I, I think I can communicate that to her. If she isn't already aware of that, or doesn't watch this meeting, but I would think that that would be, I don't think it's necessary to put a provision in there that, that explains that.
Well, I'm, I'm-
Is everyone okay with that provision? I'm sorry, without putting the provision in there?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, it's, it's an A in a contract. If you're gonna make a change, then it has to be agreed upon.
Okay. Sorry, Kelly.
Pam, you mentioned that she would still have some insurances, life insurance and something else that we would keep in there. Do you- Pam, you mentioned that, that she would still have some insurances, life insurance and something else that we would keep in there. Do you know what those amounts might be?
Pam, I think it's fifty thousand life insurance coverage, isn't it?
Life insurance is the cost of what we make for the administrative. That's how it's been. Her life insurance would be two hundred and thirty-five dollars a year. Long-term disability would be three hundred and fifty-seven dollars a year. Or, I'm sorry, nope, I'm looking at the wrong, wait a minute. I gotta go back to her, just her.
The total?
Yeah, total page. So...
I think it's a salary amount, actually.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yeah, one X probably.
Yeah.
Three forty-six and six twenty-four.
Yep.
That's one time her salary?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, um...
I gotta look at that, because I don't know why that's...
Long-term, you said long-term?
Long-term disability, life, A and D.
Is...
Um, two, three hundred and forty-five a year, and then the long-term disability is five twenty-five a year. And then you have your, with the ICMA, I think it's at four percent, would be ten thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. That would be...
Four percent of our salary?
That's us putting in, yeah. And then the pension would be four hundred and, four thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, which would be the... That would be the, that would be the MERS. And we put in, they put in five percent, we put in five percent. For the, for anybody after a certain year, I think it was twenty thirteen.
So, um...
So her total fringe package would be thirty-one thousand one hundred and sixteen dollars.
Thirty-one thousand one hundred...
Thirty-one thou, thirty, thirty-one thousand one hundred and sixteen, but I have to look at the medical envision on here, because it's only supposed to be three thousand. I don't know why it's showing six thousand.
So you were interrupted, I'm sorry, thirty-one thousand one hundred and sixteen?
One sixteen.
Okay, thank you.
But then, under the medical envision, I don't know why it says six thousand. It should be only three thousand, so I have to look at that.
So twenty-eight thousand, about?
Yes.
Sixteen?
So we're taking out thirty for health benefits, but we're adding twenty-something for life insurance, long-term, vesting, retirement. Does that sound about right?
Her medical alone, if it was a family medical, would be...
I'm just saying, we're not even including that in this.
No.
I just wanna know what we're adding to her ask of one fifteen.
It would be just the medical and li...
The life insurance and LTD and the ADN, ADND.
Which is about, uh...
So you'd have the one fifteen and then the thirty-one, or the twenty-eight thousand one sixteen. That's with the benefits that she would get.
And I don't have anything to compare it to. I didn't see what Karen has. I don't know what we offered before and what was out there. I have no clue.
Well, Cheryl was making one thirteen, plus she had the health insurance.
And the car allowance.
Car allowance and all the benefits.
Forty-one thousand three fifty-nine. She had one...
Did you send that to everyone?
I sent this to everyone, but I took it with the new administrator amount in it when I sent it to you guys. So it would reflect what the new amount would be.
And do we have a car for her use?
We have the van, and we also have the van, and we also have the code enforcement vehicle.
But I don't think that we should actually put in the code enforcement vehicle as an option, seeing that the code enforcement should be out.
Is out there full time, yes.
Yeah.
Well, she, again, she just asked that if she had to travel outside the city to a conference or something, that there was transportation for her, so she wouldn't be relying upon her own vehicle. Which I did indicate we have the city code enforcement vehicle.
Yeah, I would be hesitant on that one, only because then that would hinder the code enforcement person from doing their job.
Being out if you're at a conference for two or three days, three days.
Because most of the conferences, yeah, exactly, and they're during the day.
Probably cheaper to rent a car than to give a four hundred, fifty dollar a month allowance.
Or reimburse her based on standard mileage.
And should that be in the contract, then?
That's already in there.
Oh, that we're not gonna give her the city car, that she would use her own car?
We haven't done a contract yet for it, that's what we're trying to...
No, I meant the old one.
No, the old one she got, um...
A car allowance.
Car allowance.
Oh, gotcha, okay. Where this would just be as needed.
It's gonna say it in the personnel manual, if you take your own.
Her car.
You get mileage.
It's in the personnel manual, so.
But, um, that's a thought about reimbursing for a rental. Because we, I mean, I don't think they're gonna be, technically, they don't go on that many trainings that go that far outside of the metro Detroit area.
I think, I mean, my suggestion would be that if it's an issue that arises, you can address it at that point.
Yeah.
Whether it be renting a car, you know, there was talk last, last meeting about keeping the, the, the police SUVs and having them as additional vehicles for APS, perhaps one of those that could be kept, or a detective's car or something could be utilized for that. I think there's a, a number of solutions that don't necessarily have to be included in the employment agreement, but I think that the council could address if, should the issue present itself.
Okay. Well, I, I personally think that we should rule out using code enforcement, not even put that in there.
Rule, put in, put in that we're ruling it out?
Well, if we just put in there that, at the request of the administrator, the city will make arrangements to have a vehicle provided, not specify which vehicle it is, for travel. Again, the old agreement was outside, more than fifty miles from, from the city, so do you wanna put a threshold as to when that, when that provision would be invoked?
That was in Cheryl's along with the car allowance, her car allowance.
Correct, that's, that's been in all of them.
The, the employer, the fifty miles?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, um, discussion of the actual salary?
Well, I mean, I think if, if she's not taking healthcare and we're taking six thousand, fifty-five hundred dollars off for the, the car rental, and just the fifty-five hundred dollars alone, not car rental, for car allowance, fifty-five hundred alone takes us up to, you know, one eleven essentially. You know, and then she's not getting, getting healthcare, so it's, I mean, one fifteen could be doable, I think.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, she's forfeiting a lot of the benefits, so, in a way, to me, it seems like it evens out.
The savings.
What do you mean forfeiting a lot of the benefits?
Exactly. Well, she's, she's not taking some of the benefits.
Oh, well, yeah, but some of the benefits weren't standard, so...
Health, healthcare is standard, car allowance is, it's not unusual. I think, what is it, the study we did, it was about half, according to MML, it was about half, I believe.
No. Um, the other piece looked at salaries. We are, we're in the upper end on salaries, so. Communities up to seven thousand or five thousand. We're in the top. I always mentioned last time that we were notoriously historically low, but... That's not the case for all the other cities in region one.
So there's an agreement for the one fifteen, or what, what are you doing?
I, I said I agree, Jalen said he agrees, I don't know what the other seven.
Can, I would just like to go right through what we're offering her right now, because I, I've got a bunch of notes here. I don't have anything I'm starting with. But we're starting at one fifteen, we've got benefits, we've got, we're matching some things. Four percent increase, did we just, I mean, is all, did we make decisions on all of this? Four percent on, is that a year? I mean, what did, I'm making notes.
The match.
That was, that was the MERS.
Oh, that, that's the ICMA, that's the four percent.
I was just trying to go through each, I mean, each...
Yeah, one by one.
Yeah, just so we can move this, um, yeah, we can move around, move each such, each item along. So if you wanna go to, what is it, the matching first?
Yes.
Um, the ten percent match from the city, I think, is excessive. I think that there's not any other organization. I think the average was six, six to seven percent match.
I think when I quit, it was at three.
Yeah.
Remember, city administrators used to have a defined pension.
Right.
So this was a trade-off when we transitioned from the defined pension that Jeff Mueller had to the 401K foot one.
I got that, but on average, when you're looking at a 401K, it's on between three, three to six percent. And so do you know off the top of your head what the average is, or what cities have the defined contribution? What their percentage is, or their, what their match is?
I don't have that information.
I don't have it right off my head.
You don't?
Not right off the top of my head.
I still think that that's, I'm sorry, it's still excessive.
I don't remember it, because Cheryl was upbeat, above four percent. She was at six, I think?
That's seven.
Seven.
So, I mean, for me personally, it, I think it would be, well, I would be willing to do a six percent match.
Karen, it looks like she has some data I was waiting on here.
I'm trying to find it. All of the care, dental vision, retiree health insurance. Is that the retiree healthcare? No?
No.
No, but...
Retirement savings, defined benefits.
It's defined contribution.
Sixty-seven percent of responding employee groups indicated that they offer a defined contribution plan. Those who reported data employer contributions to the retirement plan can be summarized as follows. Max employer contribution, twenty-seven percent of the respondents did three point one to six. That was the largest group.
This is kind of above and beyond what, because we do a five and a five already, and that's the MERS. That we're, she has to put in five percent, the city puts in five percent. Then there's an HSA account that the city puts in three percent for their employees for their health savings account when they retire. But when they leave, they get to take that with them. Then there's the ICMA, which is mission, something now, but it's ICMA. That is a four fifty-seven that the employees can put money into. And in the personnel policy, I think it's in the personnel policy, that the city put, will put in four percent for the city administrator into that. And they have to put in three percent, I think, at the point. But that is an ICMA, and that's a, that's a just another, that's a defined contribution, but it's another defined contribution. It's not the MERS one, it's kinda like your own, but the city puts in that.
Okay, so that is already in the personnel. So we don't have to go above and beyond that.
And the MERS, I, the MERS is five-five, and that is, that's a set, so...
So no to the ten percent? So you're saying no to the ten percent?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, I think four percent is fine.
I think, keep it where it is. I think that's generous.
We're giving a higher salary than we, than we had originally wanted. And it's something we could always address again, you know, with the, the next contract.
So what was the match that we agreed on?
Five-five.
No, five-five is for the, that's the standard for the...
MERS.
For MERS. We're talking about ICMA, which is essentially the 401K.
Four-three, so?
Yeah. The four is, four, so the manual is four, four, for us, three, three employees.
Right, and she, well, that, we gotta get back to that, that's something else, so... Because on this match, she would be vested right away, but the MERS, she will not be vested right away, and she'd like to be vested. So we would have to open a group just for her through MERS to have her vested.
At least I have to negotiate that part. She would like to be vested immediately.
What is the, what's the normal vesting, of the timeframe?
Three years to five years?
No, five years is a hundred percent. What it happens is like zero to two years, you get none of the city money, zero percent of the city money. Then you get a twenty-five percent of the city money, and then I think it's seventy-five and a hundred, so it's, there's a step increase on that.
Keep that step increase.
There's gonna be a fee to open that window.
Yes.
Right.
Yeah.
Probably an initial fee, and I'm getting a maintenance fee as well.
And when I did talk to her, she says she has had that hap, she has, other cities have done that, so, or other places have done that. She has had no problem with vesting right away, so...
So we are saying that we wanna keep the vesting at the same amount, same time?
It's one to two years is zero percent, three years is twenty-five percent, four years is fifty percent, and five years is a hundred percent.
Thank you.
I suggest we keep it the same, step process.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that either.
Sounds like more money. I feel like we should get some yeses or no's.
Are we gonna come back and negotiate everything like this individually?
I don't really understand.
Well, she'll have a contract written up, and then she'll...
Right.
Either accept the contract, and then it will come to council for the final. If she's, yeah.
Right, this is step one.
Okay, Kelly, you just said you were, we were, we would have to negotiate it, so I was just asking, when does that happen? Do we come back for each thing?
So when you're in a negotiation, you give your best shot, she'll come back and give her best shot, and we go, you know, maybe do another negotiation. And then, once we get to an agreeable situation, Scott draws up the contract, we still go over that particular contract. So to answer your question, yes, we would go over it again, but we're just doing first steps now. Someone's waiting to get in, too.
Scott, have you start, have you officially started negotiations? Aren't we in the negotiation process right now?
Yeah, I conveyed the city's initial salary offer to her, I got her expectations and demands, and I kinda went through, as I indicated before, kind of these bigger, these areas as to what, you know, what the, what, what the previous administrators had been offered and what she could expect this council to offer her. So, like I said, those, those, her comments were, were, were in response to that discussion.
So, the next one, the four weeks of vacation upfront, what do we normally offer?
Cheryl got six.
What do we normally offer?
Employees get two weeks after their first year, and then it increases from there. So you get two weeks, and then you get, after five years, you get three weeks, and then a day per year up to twenty. So twenty is our max in vacation for the employees.
So starting out, is that two weeks that you get?
And Cheryl started at four, was it?
I think she started at six.
I don't think she started at six.
I think we added a week somewhere along the line. I don't remember correctly.
I can pull it up.
I think it was thirty days.
Six weeks.
I think.
Thirty days in her first contract.
That's what I thought, it wasn't that six weeks.
That's six weeks, Kelly, five times six is thirty. That's six weeks, Kelly. Five times six is thirty.
Take a, take a chill pill. I could be wrong once. Jesus Christ. Um, so four weeks of vacation, where, where are we at on that?
I'm fine with four weeks.
Yeah, she wants less.
Sixty seems, or, six seems like a lot.
Okay, so we're with four weeks, we're with the one fifteen, we're with the, um, matching as we have it.
Four percent.
Four percent.
Standard vesting.
Well, for, on the, the ICMA, the cities, her contribution is four, and the city's is three, for a total of seven. That's what Cheryl's was. What did?
I thought it was the other way around.
I thought it was the other way around.
No, we hit, we get four to apartment heads. That's the HSA. We do three percent for the HSA. And the ICMA is reversed.
What is the desired contribution for the ICMA?
For the ICMA, um, for the manager, it's four percent for the ICMA. And Cheryl had, um, seven percent that she got negotiated with the council.
Yeah, she had the four plus up to three if she, she elected to contribute seven, then the city would match seven.
Right. Right. She had the four, and then she.
So you just want the four?
Yeah, just the four.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, we agreed to just four.
Four, yeah.
So she can't put anything into it?
She can put whatever she wants in.
She can put three percent. Okay.
No, she can put what she wants in.
It's not going to be in here. We'll only match to four.
We only have four percent.
And the HSA is three percent?
Yes.
She didn't ask anything about that, right?
No.
Oh, she didn't?
No. She's not, she doesn't have insurance, health insurance.
Oh, yeah, so.
Well, the HSA is for the health retiring system. That's if you retire, but what it states, that if anybody leaves here, they can take that with them. So it doesn't matter if you're here six months, whatever's in there, you get to take with you. That's, um.
Is that the same for everybody?
Scott and I are the last two. Well, we have three of us that are on, because he'll be retiring. But we are the last ones that will get healthcare retirement when we leave. There's only three of us left. Becker will get it August second when he retires, and then Scott and I are the last two. Everybody else went to an HSA account. But they, um, when that came up, they knew that they couldn't put enough in an HSA for Scott and I. Well, Scott's was under a contract at that time too, but they couldn't put enough in an HSA to, for both of us, with what people are getting now. There, there was just no way they could do it, so they thought it would be better just to keep us where we're at. So.
How much did you say was in the HSA here?
Three percent.
All right, thank you.
So, um.
Seven.
Severance, um, what I have down was sixty to ninety days.
I think I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I, I guess what I would suggest is, is a sixty day severance for the first six months. And at, at six months, you know, pending, you know, uh, positive evaluation, then it goes up to the, the standard, the standard, uh, hundred and eighty days.
You said sixty?
Six, so it's basically two months, two months for the first six months. And then after six months, go up to the, the, kind of the government standard or the city's standard of six months.
So in the, in Cheryl's agreement, you had performance review. The first one was ninety, six months, two hundred and seventy, and then one year. Did you want to keep the quarterly evaluations in there? Or did you just want it to be six months?
So that's just evaluations. That's not with the severance, though, right?
No, and that's, but you're doing the evaluations, and that's why I thought, um, you know, if you're going to do an evaluation in ninety days, and after that first evaluation, that you could, you know, increase that severance.
Yeah, I think, I think it's too. I, I feel like that's too soon. I'd like to see it at six months. I mean, we could still do the evaluations, especially in the first year. I think that's important, so that she knows she's getting the feedback that she needs to effectively do her job. But, um, you know, I'd like it to, personally, my, my view is I'd like it to be progressive, like, like that, at, at six months, you know, then, then increase it.
I agree with you, Bruce.
Did the, did that happen? While these evaluations done?
Yeah, Cheryl got evaluations, yeah.
Okay, what's next?
Um. I think that was really all that she was asking for. We said that, like, there's a note for allowance.
Did we miss anything, Scott?
Four weeks of vacation.
No, I got hours of work, um, no residency requirement, um. She's, she's available to start whenever. Um, I think we're still waiting on the background check, but if you wanted to have a contingent starting date, I mean, Scott, do you have an update on the, where they're at with it? You're not doing it, are you?
No, I'm a no's.
No, I'm not doing it. I'm a no's.
I'm a, okay.
And Joyce was putting.
That's something too.
Scott, Joyce was told me that it could take up to four weeks for the background to come back, but.
But I think it took some time on one of the other ones, and it was contingent. The employment was in contingent on the background check.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that there needs to be in there. What did you say?
You just have a full background check. Her, her last employment, she indicated no issues, so, for what that's worth.
So I think that we have, um, worked some of it out unless there's any, anyone else that wants to have any input on council.
Is it possible, Scott, for you to draft it and just send us each a quick copy, just so we can, before you present it to her? So we could see what we said, what we agreed to?
Yeah, I can send it. The problem is that we can't have a discussion about it then unless we're going to do another meeting. That's why, you know, that's why initially you gave me some guidance. I asked if you, individually, if you had anything, send it, and I would incorporate it. So I can, I can, but I would prefer if you did engage in, you know, having a discussion about the terms.
Oh, no, I just want to see if everything, no, I just want to make sure everything we discussed was presented to her.
Yeah, I can do that.
Oh, sick days. What did we decide on sick days?
Well, she'll get one per month, like, all employees.
What was that, a hundred and eighty days?
That is a, that's like a catastric, catastrophic leave, so if something were to happen.
And that's in there? Catastrophic? Are we adding that in there?
It was in there, in the last one.
Yeah, that's been in, that, again, that's been in all of them, and I think that hundred and eighty days is available, correct me if I'm wrong, Pam, but to, to anyone that would have to utilize, any city employee that would have to utilize that, um, bank if they were waiting for their short-term or long-term disability to kick in.
Uh, long-term, we don't have short-term, but in the city, um, we don't have, the, the employees don't have that. I know the police officers have that in their contract, but the city employees do not. They would have family medical leave is what they would have.
And the police officers earn a, a half a day a month of catastrophics, so the longer you're here, the more time you'll build up.
And are these sick days accumulated? No? If you don't use it, you lose it?
No, our sick time is accumulated.
I thought it was, um, adjusted to us, um, keeping transferring over a certain amount.
Yes, did we make a change to?
Yeah, we made a change.
That vacation dues?
It is, uh, up to, um, mine are the only ones that are in question.
But we, but we, I know we changed it, where you can only take a certain amount.
I get paid out a hundred hours every year. Half of the hundred hours I get paid every year, July, of my sick time.
Yeah, but I could swear we did something, for others, we did something different.
Yeah.
But other ones, there is a limit on the others. Yes.
So we're going to keep, we're going to keep the limit for that that's been implemented for everyone else.
Let me look and see.
Policy number?
That, so, keep the, the sick, the one that we implemented for everyone going forward.
Yeah, just a minute.
Okay.
I have it here. The city will not buy back excessive sick time on an annual basis. However, there shall be no cap on the accumulated of sick time in the employees' sick leave bank. That's the excessive accumulation by back. But before that, it says sick leave shall be considered for most purposes. Employment, all unused sick leave shall be canceled and not paid with the following. There shall be no cap on the number of hours of unused sick leave days paid out at fifty percent for retiring employees hired prior to. But the Shelby, shall request received payout of a hundred. See, that's all about me. There isn't, I don't see anything.
You can get back to us.
Yeah, because we did, I know we, we did some, we did some changes for that.
You need anything else, Scott, or did we cover it all?
I think you've covered everything.
And when can you get the, um, copy for us just to look over, and when will you present this to Sue?
Probably tomorrow.
Okay. Tomorrow, oh, you said tomorrow.
Oh.
All right, is there anything else, um, regarding the salary discussion? Anything? No? Okay. Um, is there any public comment? You don't have anyone that's here. I'll look it up also. Some moving to mayor and council comments? There any council comments?
Yeah, I've got some. Um, so Suzie and I met late last week with OHM, that's our water loss consultant. They did give us a report. I was going to bring a copy for everyone at the council, but I thought the meeting started at six, and I had to rush out the door, uh, after just literally getting off my bike. So, um, I will get that, Pam, to email to everybody. But, uh, they've said with, with a ninety-plus percent likelihood that they feel that the culprit of our water loss is the, is an oversized meter at the eleven mile vault where all our water comes in. So right now, we have a twelve inch mag meter. And, um, the twelve inch mag meter is, is designed and optimized for a flow rate of eleven hundred to fourteen thousand gallons per minute. And when you fall under that optimized flow, the accuracy of the meter deteriorates. So per their discussions with the manufacturer, uh, when you run from eighty-eight gallons per minute to eleven hundred gallons per minute, so basically from eighty-eight gallons per minute to the low end of the optimization range, um, when you're running under, under that eleven hundred, it's a one percent error. And when you fall below, below that from thirty-four to eighty-eight gallons per minute, the error jumps up to three percent. Um, although the, the, the rep for the, for that twelve inch mag meter did say when you fall below five, fifty-five gallons per minute, the accuracy is, is very difficult to predict of, of that meter. Um, and then in addition to that, uh, and I'll tell you how that relates to what we'll do in a second, but in addition to that, our, our consultants have indicated that, um, those are the specs, but in real life situations, what they've seen is that the, the accuracy falls worse than what, what they, they quote per spec. Now, our average flow is three hundred gallons per minute. So our average flow is here, and the low end rate of efficiency is like up to the ceiling. So we're way under that. Our maximum flow at any given time in the day is about six hundred gallons per, per, um, per, per minute. So even at a, at a maximum flow, we're, we're well below the low end range of what that meter is, is optimized for. So, um, so when we are at low flow, which is the overnight hours, um, what the data is showing us from that meter is that the, the meter reading is bouncing from zero to eighty-two. Eighty-two is the low reading, um, but in fact, really, we only get the eighty-two reading on occasion. It's more like a hundred and forty. So it's really bouncing back between zero and a hundred and forty, when our actual flow is zero, fifteen, thirty, twenty, whatever. So what's happening is that we're, we're getting charged for a lot more water than we're using. So at a low flow rate, it's pretty dramatic. When our, when our rate is, is a little bit higher, it's still, um, undergoing errors that I talked about earlier, because we're well under the optimization, uh, flow range of, of that particular meter. So the, the interesting thing is, is, is our water loss increases coincide, what we learned, coincided with the shut off of the meter at twelve mile. So twelve mile, the twelve mile meter was, we, we've been told two different things about, uh, why the twelve meter, uh, what about the twelve mile meter, um, was shut down, and it's probably a combination of both. One was, was that, um, because the, at the twelve mile site versus the eleven mile site, it's a much higher pressure at the twelve mile, uh, twelve mile end. Um, that was contributing to a lot of the water main breaks that we were having, because we've got an old fragile system. And then also, uh, when they put the mast arms out on, on twelve and Southfield, um, they accidentally destroyed the power source to that, to that meter. So they, the decision was made at that time to shut the meter off and just use the eleven mile meter, which is at a, a more low pressure site. So, so because it was high pressure at twelve mile, all the water was really coming in at twelve mile, and it was hitting that meter. And as soon as that was cut off, now the meter readings were being taken from, from, from eleven mile.
Now with SAKWA?
What's that?
With SAKWA that you did.
Yeah. Um, so, um, our, our next steps is, you know, we, we've asked OHM to provide us with a, a quote for assisting us with the replacement of the, uh, twelve inch meter at eleven mile with a, a six inch mag meter. So basically the same kind of meter. The mag meters are the most accurate meters that are out there. So with a, um, a, a meter that's much more sized for our community's water usage. And if that is the smoking gun, which we hope that it is, um, if it is the smoking gun, then what they can do is they can statistically begin to determine how much water we're actually using. And we can go back and look at the delta between what we were actually charged and what we actually used. Then we can begin to negotiate with SAKWA and to try to get a refund for all that water that we were billed for that we didn't use. Again, if that is truly indeed the smoking gun, which they are, they think it is, as I said earlier, ninety-plus percent likely that this meter, uh, is, is our culprit. Um, even if it's not, replacing the meter will still have benefits, because, as I mentioned, because of our low flow rate being under the optimized range, um, we're still in, receiving errors in our, our, the, the reading that SAKWA is getting, um, even when we're at, at higher flows for, for us as a city. And should it not be the smoking gun, um, again, they think it's, they have a very high confidence that, that it is. If it's not, then, um, they've outlined some things that we can do to, um, begin looking for, uh, other possible explanations with, with a lot of field, field testing to go and look for, um, cross connects to other systems, Southfield and other places that, that might be open. Whether or not there could be, this is one thing I, we talked about at one of our infrastructure meetings. You know, could there be a, an unknown, um, unknown connect? So with all the work that's been done, say, for example, around, you know, just north of, of twelve mile, could they have accidentally tapped into one of our, um, our water mains, you know, in Southfield? Uh, so those are all things that can be tested, looking at various pressures on one side versus the, versus the other of various valves. Uh, the other thing that was, was interesting is, she also said that they, they've seen in, in several communities, older communities like ours, where you end up having, um, mixed valve types, where some of them closed by, or most of them closed by turning clockwise, and, but some of them closed by turning counterclockwise. So they've seen instances where, um, in older, again, in older systems like ours, where they go out and they look at the valve, and they think it's closed, but in fact, it's actually open. So those are things, the kinds of things that we'll, we'll, we'll check for. But, um, hopefully, we won't get to that point, um, because, again, they, they think that they may have found the, the smoking gun, and we're, we're hoping that that's the case. But, um, we're waiting from OHM to give us a quote on how much that's, it's going to cost, and write us a proposal to assist us with that work. So it's, it's not just as simple as pulling the one meter out and pulling the other meter out. There's different flow rates you have to look at. So if there's a fire, you know, our, our gallons per minute will spike up, and the meter's got to be able to handle that. So historically, um, you know, cities had two meters, you know, one for high flow, one for low flow. So there's a lot of things to consider, and, uh, we've asked for a, a proposal to help us. help us with that. So, that's where we stand with that. And I'll, I'll get that report out to all of you guys this week.
Is that something we would have to pay for or SAKWA?
We'll see. I mean, you know, first we have to figure out if that's the problem and then if it is the problem, then we can, you know, I mean, not only can, I guess potentially, we could try to negotiate getting money back for SAKWA, not only for the actual water that we've lost, but also for the money that we've invested to solving the problem. And, you know, it's obviously not just-
They can't, and they can't turn back, turn twelve mile back on?
Well, we are, we, so SAKWA is committed to putting a new meter on twelve mile and restoring the power again. Again, it's not an easy thing to do because they've got to get under the roadway, so it requires destruction and then construction, but we asked them about six months ago if they would commit to do that because we need to have a backup if something happens at eleven, eleven and Southfield. So, we have, have another way for water to come into the city and be metered. So, they'd agree to do that. I know last time I emailed back and forth to Bob Jacoboff, I believe he said the meter had been ordered and then it just-
Everything's back ordered and?
Yeah, so.
How old were our meters?
Two thousand fifteen or fourteen, something like that. These, these are, these are the SAKWA meters, these aren't the meters in the homes.
Okay, no, that's, yeah, I knew that's what you were talking about.
Yeah, they've been replaced within the last twenty years. I don't remember the exact date, I think it's in the presentation somewhere, but two thousand fourteen maybe, something like that.
And did we pay for them then?
I don't know who pays, I'm guessing, I'm guessing SAKWA pays for them, but, I mean, it would make sense because they're the, we're their client.
We ultimately pay, but yes.
Right, exactly.
Just a portion.
Yeah, so, but yeah, it's, it's in the presentation that I'll send you.
Thank you.
That's all?
That's it. And then I just had a question for Scott. I had a couple of calls about fireworks this weekend. I know the state, well, a couple of people have called me and said that they called the police and the police said that they're allowed till eleven, eleven forty-five, but the, I believe the state ordinance lists the specific holidays and I don't, have they updated Juneteenth as one of those holidays?
Suzie asked me about that this afternoon. Not to my knowledge, I mean, there's only a handful of identified holidays, not all federal holidays qualified as firework-eligible holidays, so I, I did tell her I would look into it, I have not done that yet, but to my knowledge, there hasn't been any, any additions to that list. There certainly hasn't been any additions to ours, which, which identify the specific holidays that you are allowed at the timeframes you're allowed to-
Right, so technically, Southfield Dispatch was incorrect telling them, I mean, they should have sent an officer out there, correct?
Correct, as far as I know, it's Labor Day, Memorial Day, Fourth of July from, I think that June twenty-ninth through the fifth.
Yeah.
And then New Year's Eve.
Yeah. Yeah, with some-
Yeah, there's varies depending on what it falls on Friday or Saturday.
Yeah. Yeah, that's all I have.
And we were going to post that on the, in the e-newsletter and our officers have a copy of all that as well, so.
Anyone else?
I have a couple of things. I was just wondering, the citywide garage sale is Saturday, when did the registration for that open up? Do you know? I saw something posted on website today.
Couple of weeks ago, couple of weeks ago. So, it's been in the, I thought it was in the e-newsletter.
And you could register at that point?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, we have a list already started.
Okay. And you have the signs? You're giving out signs? Well, there'll be one at each end or, and then just one for your yard? Or how are we putting the signs out?
Well, they get three signs, so.
Oh.
Two, two signs, they get two signs for the homes and that, so.
And signs have to be on private property?
Oh, so they won't be on the side roads?
They have to be on private property, so they can't be in the right of way.
And then one other, oh, actually, two other things. I was going through the MML information, I was wondering why our police information isn't on MML?
I can't answer that.
Okay. And then the last meeting asked for the revenue and expenses for the tea room trip and I believe Kelly said to have it by Friday, I have not received anything.
Suzie was going to get that. A reminder.
Thanks.
Oh, you got, okay. Well, I have one, one comment. So, on this past Saturday, we had our Juneteenth, annual Juneteenth event titled Unity in the Community. We had a really great time, residents and neighbors of Lethrop came out to celebrate and I would like to thank the vendors personally. So, we had Saucy Temptations, Ayana Kaylee, we had Essential, Motivation, Candace Fleming, TDMK Silk Screening, Frank and Patricia Watts, artist and actor Devon Laster, we had Larry Castleberry, which was our storyteller, we had the Ultimate Boom Party Rental, we had Sister Rose Cuisine Food Truck Designs by Patricia, Patricia Baker, Alfreda, Alfreda Wallace, our, she did jewelry, Steve Silk Sterkey, he did the Hustle Lessons for us. We had Mache's Grub, she's a personal chef, Derek Lockhart, he did popcorn, Cheryl Heading, Jury Carlton Board, he did the steel drums, we had Lynn's Face Painting, Tyler Time Childcare, and they provide free childcare for ages three or four. And then last but not least, I would like to thank our committee, so that would consist of Grace Green, and it was recently her birthday, and then I would like to thank Pam Perkins, Mark, I'm going to mess up his last name, so I'm just going to not say it, and then he's the editor for the Southfield Sun, and then we had-
Raitanga.
Or Raitanga?
Mark Raitanga.
Okay, well, we all fail with last names every once in a while. But then we had Brittany Dorsey and Suzie Steck, she's the DDA director and Brittany is our special projects DDA manager. And then I would like to thank the DDA board as well. So, yeah, thank you all for whoever attended and hopefully you can attend next year if you didn't. So, thank you.
Yeah, that storyteller is great. It was the second time, he was their, he was their last year too.
Yep, he was their last year.
Right.
And just FYI for the citizens, the May twentieth was the first e-newsletter mentioning the citywide garage sale, just for clarification.
It didn't say regi-, you could register at that point. I, I remember seeing that was coming, but-
Is there anything else that, Barbie, you have anything? All right, well, then I would take a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned, have a good evening.